Hey, everyone. It's time for our regular council meeting. It's Monday, July the fourteenth, 2025 at 6:00 PM. This time, let us stand for our implication, which will be led by Councilman Floyd Rogers, and our pledge of allegiance.
Oh, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather again as a council. We thank you that we can serve you here, and we thank you for the, all the work that has been done by this council, and all the good things that have happened this year, for the budget just being passed, and for the, I think the good news we're going to hear today about the audit, and we pray your blessing upon this city. Thank you for all the people that work here and care so much and love their jobs. It is such a blessing to see them and, and work with them. It's, it's a privilege to be here, Father. We thank you for the opportunity to serve. We pray your blessing upon this council meeting tonight, and in Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now, for our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I think all that needs to be said, as far as comments from me, is that we're just waiting to hear from our auditor and see where we're at, and I'm so glad that our council has worked hard, and Mandy and Dana worked so hard with the finance department, along with our administrator, Tim O'Bryant. It's, it's just a pleasure that we're starting to move forward as far as the finances are concerned, and really getting a hold on what we need to be about and what we're doing. That being said, we're going on into the comments from citizens. Ms. Louise Hope, going to talk to us about Turtles on the Town.
Thank you for having me. I'm Louise Hope, so people call me the Turtle Lady.
All right.
Y'all may not know that back in 2011, the City Council approved Turtles on the Town, and it was a school project, so it didn't cost y'all anything. We got sponsorship from the businesses, and we put 12 turtles, now there's 13 around Pickens. So some of y'all have seen them. I gave you a brochure that said, black and white, for the Turtles on the Town. And it was about 2018, I believe, that the city wrote a grant trying to get people to come from Doodle Trail into town, so they included the turtles in that grant. And so, part of that grant was to have five more turtles. So when you go to the Doodle Trail, that's, you can see some turtles down there. And because those weren't sponsored by businesses, the original turtles were named by the business. So I kind of created the Touristy Turtles on the Town, and when you look at that colored brochure, that's why they're named after famous people in Pickens history. So it's more of a historical tour of the turtles. But anyway, I'm here with several concerns about the turtles, because I think they're a great tourist attraction. They're kind of like mice on mane, and we can draw people to come here, walk around, see the businesses, look for the turtles. And I know budget is a horrible word, but if there's a way to even have $20 a month for the turtles, I would like to have brochures printed, because in the past, the Chamber of Commerce printed these for me, and they would just give them to me. I'd fold them, and I'd stick them in the kiosks, like the one at Doodle Trail. There's one at the amphitheater. So I've always had brochures available for people that wanted them. You can go to the city website and download them from there, but I just thought it was kind of nice to have the paper copy, too. So it would just be some of the money. I don't know who needs to print them, but if somebody can, I'll be glad to take on that responsibility of folding them and getting them out, so they're always available. Right now, when you go to the kiosk, the solid locked kiosks that's at Doodle Park, you can see the brochures mounted. I mean, people could see them, but there's just nothing they can take with them. So I just throw that idea out there. Every so often, a nameplate comes up missing, because each turtle has its own nameplate with the name of the turtle and the description of them, what kind of turtle they are. I think the one right now, the Water Tower, is missing. And in the couple of years past, I went ahead and just paid for those, but they're about $25 or $30 apiece. And it'd be nice to, I mean, that's just like once in a blue moon, that one of those comes up missing. I have one at my house right now that needs to be re-glued at the amphitheater, so I can pass that to somebody, put somebody in charge of re-gluing that with the proper kind of glue. That would be great. So that's just another idea. The, we actually have a coloring book that came out years ago. I'm going to give this to the mayor to pass on to your granddaughter. It's kind of cool, my students created this. And I'm not saying to produce those. I think Hightower still has the format for all those.
Right.
But if you had them here at the water department, we sold them for a dollar apiece at the Haygood Mill. So I'm not saying give them away, because it's kind of pricey, but you could sell them and recoup your money, just as a further promotion, or hand them out at some city event, kind of a fun thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And the turtles, the brochures, the postcards here, we did these just kind of for fun. You know, it's just another idea. Haygood Mill right now is selling them at their site, so those are available, too. But, you know, main thing is just start the brochures and get word out about the turtles. My last concern is that the turtles start at Legacy Square in the fountain, which is no more. So I think they're in storage somewhere. Has anybody seen the four turtles sitting on the log? There's like one of these warehouses that the city has, but they're...
I think Wayne knows who has some. It was at the maintenance department, someone took them to his house.
Yeah, so they're being stored.
Yeah, they're in our shop.
Oh, perfect, perfect. So even though the turtles at the Legacy Square are sliders, that's why they were put into the water there, I would like to have them reinstalled. I just think it's the start of our Turtles on the Town, if people come out and there's like no turtles there. So maybe temporarily, if we could have them, the maintenance, the maintenance department install them maybe along the concrete there, along the wall, not on the new fountain area, but just, they have to go into concrete. There's a big metal pin coming out of their bellies, so you drill a hole and glue and stick them on, and nobody can get them up. But it'd be nice if we can go ahead and get those installed. Someday, you know, I've heard word that maybe there'll be a fountain for the city of Pickens, and if that becomes true, then we could certainly move them to the fountain area, and I could revamp the brochures, so we have a new starting place for them. But just for now, I was thinking if we could get them installed, that would be good for our tourists and their, I mean, some of the schools come out as an end-of-the-year field trip with their students, and they go around all the businesses and stuff, so, so I guess if I can just hook up with somebody about getting those turtles reinstalled.
I think you get into our administrator, and he will get in touch.
That's great.
We'll see what we can do with it.
Thank you so much for appreciating Turtles on the Town.
Thank you for all your work with that, too. That's a beautiful thing.
I think that property is owned by the, by the church.
Right.
Get their approval back.
Right. Yes, sir. Okay. Mr. Doug Tate, concerns about the Colonial House.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Once again, I appreciate you listening to me for just a few minutes, but I would like to take a moment to tell you guys, I really appreciate the job that y'all are doing with Pickens. Pickens is growing, and I think a lot of it has to do with your leadership, so thank you for that. My memory isn't real great, so if you don't mind, I'll just read this. When I moved to Pickens in 2015, Pickens was a nice, quiet little town, but seemed to be a bit of a backwater compared to Easley and Clemson. They seemed to get most of the attention from the public, as well as the county administration. Lately, Pickens has begun to show very real signs of growth. There are people parking and walking up and down Main Street, visiting shops and restaurants, following the turtle tour, and visiting the parks and green spaces. In my experience, a town just needs a few things to start that growth and help maintain its momentum. Places to eat and places to stay seem to be critical to growth. The more restaurants that have opened in Pickens, the more people we see walking around Pickens. It seems that at least some of the people who were blasting through Pickens on their way to the lake or other places were stopping, at least for a short time, and spending a few dollars. This makes Pickens attractive to those looking for a place to put down roots. We need restaurants and B&Bs to maintain that momentum. I don't know why the planning commission turned down a restaurant in the Colonial House while agreeing to an Airbnb. There are businesses surrounding the Colonial House. There is plenty of parking available. It's an attractive venue and a spot that will encourage patrons to visit other shops nearby, and as a place to eat, it will encourage more visitations from those people passing through Pickens on their way to somewhere else. We can't afford to limit ourselves to what is here. We need to think of the future of our town in terms of growth and livability for our residents. Businesses such as this bring in more businesses, bringing in revenue through taxes and license fees, as well as a higher standard of living for our residents. That's what growth is all about. I would like to encourage this council to approve both the Airbnb, as well as the restaurant in the Colonial House. I believe they'll be good for Pickens. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Councilman Alex Seda.
I just want to give you...
I'm sorry, Chair.
That's right. You're embarrassing me.
Yes. No, I'm not as bad. You were well-earned.
I want to give you an update on some county issues as they intertwine with the city. The Pickens County Courthouse has been overcrowded for a while now, so this fall, what the county government did is repurchased the old Caroline Investors Building on Garvin Street. The plan is to move Department of Juvenile Justice, probation, parole, and pardons, and possibly the public defender, from the courthouse over to that Garvin Street property. This is going to shift about 30 employees from the, and their visitors, from the courthouse westward over towards Garvin Street. I think this is going to help you with some congestion that you're having around the courthouse. Now, when it comes to off-street parking, there's 125 spaces behind the courthouse and in that big county parking lot that's across from 178. The county just purchased the old Roy Knight Building, as well as the Ben Trotter Pest Control Building. Both of those are going to be leveled, we're going to pave them, and we're going to add parking. So that purchase is going to connect the courthouse with the land in between over to that Garvin Street property, and there's going to be about 190 spaces in total there that are going to be off-street. So this is indirectly going to help the city, because it's going to give you more off-street parking south of Main Street. By the way, Alliance Pickens, which is a county department, helped find and brokered a deal between Behavioral Health Services and Alice Manufacturing when Behavioral Health Services moved off of Main Street. I think this is free to parking for retail on Main Street in the downtown area, and my understanding is two of those buildings have been sold of the three, and one, we're hoping will actually be a restaurant, is the hope. Next up is the Senior Center. You own that building, city owns that building. In March, the county gave the seniors $25,000 to replace their dining room, dining room floor, the ceiling. Going to add some fans there, going to do some work in the kitchen, and everything's going to get a fresh paint job in the kitchen and the dining area. So that works underway now, and it's going to be a nice upgrade to your building, and I think for the seniors as well. Next is J.C. Park. Last year, the city requested, and the county gave you $50,000 to help renovate J.C. Park. Last summer, the rec director and myself, we toured the improvements, and we talked about a $60,000 piece of playground equipment for that green area. The county's allocated and given the city $30,000 of that. My understanding is you purchased that equipment, and city hall is telling me that you're going to have it installed within the next few weeks.
Yes.
That's going to be a big upgrade to your park. Next is Bruce Field. I see that you're actually doing some sewer work down there, and the city administrator, Cameron and I, have talked about in the past of actually the county helping you spruce up parts of that Bruce Field. Our hope is we can work together on that later in the year for maybe something early next year at Bruce Field. Next is the county's adding EMS stations. We're adding one in Easley, we're adding another one in Central. We feel that's going to reduce call time or response time by about 20% county-wide. We know that the clock is ticking on the temporary station that we have for EMS on Ann Street. Once those two stations are up and running in Easley and Central, we're going to turn our focus to either building a new station in Pickens or acquiring a building for the new EMS station in Pickens. Next is the new call center that's being built behind the county administration building. It's slowly going up, we got the foundation in. That's going to be finished by early next year. Now, the county has absorbed dispatch from the city of Pickens, from Central and Liberty, and so those 9/11 calls, or your 9/11 calls, are actually going to come out of that state-of-the-art facility early next year. And in March, we're also going to move the county's EMS, fire, and rescue calls into that new facility. The aim, and we've got fingers crossed on this, is that all 9/11 calls at some point are going to be dispatched out of that $12.1 million facility. Finally, the county receives state accommodations tax money, and half of that this year, we allocated to organizations in and around the city of Pickens. For example, the county awarded the Chamber of Commerce in Pickens $12,400 for the Appalachian Folk Festival. County also gave a tax money to the chamber for $16,200 for the Summer Concert Series, which I guess is going on right now. And then finally, we gave the Azalea Festival $9,000 of a tax money.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do. We really appreciate you, Chairman. It's a blessing that all that you're doing to help us as a little town. Now, we have Mr. Jonathan Baker about to commission.
So I've actually changed my whole plan of what I was going to talk about this evening, being inspired by a few individuals in the community. I really appreciate you coming up here and, you know, looking at the details of the town, and Mr. Tate also spoke about the Colonial House. Clearly, I don't have all the information, and I'm not making a presentation tonight that wasn't in my plans, but I would like to extend the invitation for anybody that had any questions or concerns to get more information about the ideas that I have, and that's also going to go out not just to the council, and the city, everybody in whole, but the actual whole community. I didn't know, am I allowed to say my number here in case anybody wanted to contact me?
Yes, sir.
So if anybody does want to contact me in reference to questions or concerns or ideas, my direct number is 864-293-0514. So whether if it's for or against it, or if you would just like to reach out and tell me some history about it, I'm always, you know, open and love to hear, you know, more informa, I don't know everything about the house. It's been here for a way longer time than any of us. I learn new things every day. There's a lot of stuff that the community doesn't know about the place yet. We've, we've opened up some, some secret rooms, we'll call it, with some hidden documents, and, you know, all of those, we hope to have, you know, future display, and we hope to work a little bit more with the Historic Society and a few other individuals from the community. So just wanted to say I appreciate somebody taking their time, come up here and say something, you know, true and positive concerns with the, with the idea. So y'all have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. That will do it for our comments. At this time, we have our administrator report.
Mr. Mayor, I too am anxious to get to David's presentation, so I'll keep this very brief.
So, yes.
Last week, perhaps our timing was off a little bit. We did have one council member who was able to attend, but there's a lot of things going on this time of year, but we had a wonderful group employee appreciation luncheon with all of our staff, and we really enjoyed getting everybody together and honoring their service to our community. Last week, fed them some good food and talked about our mission as a team, did a lot of preparing for the coming budget year, so it was a good event. Currently, I've been doing a lot over these last, or first two weeks of the budget year regarding our planned rehabilitation of the 120 Haygood, which is the former teen canteen property, basically assembling engineering reviews and, what's the word I'm looking for? The inspections and such to evaluate. Basically, the, the news is fairly good that the place is in rough shape, it's been leaking for many years, but the basic structure seems to be very sound. So we continue with those estimates or assessments, and expect to have some quotes on, the most pressing need is the roof, so we need to get some quotes on replacing that. And then, unlike a lot of buildings, we'll start at the roof and build down from there. And then, we did, the council chairman, Seda, talked about Bruce Field. We did have a little bit of a setback. We did get sewer, several blocks put in instead of replacing the longtime septic, which has been an issue there. And then, we parked a flaming, no, it was an accident, but a large lawnmower that caught on fire, and there was a fire in the fieldhouse. Fortunately, there was very quick response, but we're still evaluating that and doing insurance claims. The roof was not penetrated, but the walls were blackened, and there's some smoke and water damage on the inside, so we'll keep you up to date.
Thank you.
Once we get that. But without questions, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you so much. Now we're ready for the approval of minutes. June 16th, 2025, special call meeting, and June the 23rd, regular call meeting. Can I have a motion? If you've been able to read it, to accept the minutes as read, or any corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I've reviewed the minutes, and they appear to be correct. I make a motion that they be approved, both the, the special call meeting of June 16th and the regular call meeting of June 23rd.
Thank you.
Aye, sir.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are you ready for questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous with Councilman Winters' absence. Now we're ready for our 2022 and 2023 audit presentation. Come on up.
Appreciate that. You know, I guess we met last time around May 19th, so we're, you know, at the finish line, which is, I know, a good thing, I think, for all of us. So if you don't mind, I know I've given you copies of this big green book, you know, and that's kind of hard to digest in a meeting like this, and so what we try to do is hit the highlights on a PowerPoint. But again, as we go through it, if you have questions, please feel free to interject, or we can discuss them at the end, whichever is easier. I guess somebody has a flipper? Okay, great. So we'll go ahead and hit the first slide. We like to, to remind everybody that the importance of internal controls, that you want to make sure, and it's not just a government, but it's any organization, that you want there to be checks and balances. You want to make sure that one person can't do it all. And so one of the things that we do as your auditors is that we try to look at your significant internal control processes, and if we see that there's issues, it's important that I talk to Tim and Mandy about it, but it's also important that you know about it, because you can't fix it if you don't know it's broken, right? And so we try to do that. And again, these are your financial statements, so when we come to the next slide, that our responsibility, again, is to issue an opinion. We look at things from a materiality perspective, and, and, you know, our purpose is not necessarily, is not to detect fraud, we're trying to just make sure that the financial statements are materially correct. But if we come across stuff, then we're going to make you aware of it. And, and so we have issued what they call an unmodified, that's a weird term, but that's a clean opinion. If we modified our opinion, it would say, everything looks good except for this. And so right now, if you remember where we were a couple of months ago, there were some items that still need to be investigated, and Manley Garvin, and Mandy and the staff were able to dig in, and we were able to locate that there were some expenditures that needed to be recorded in the utility fund related to the clear water system, some of their costs. And so when we were able to kind of look at all that, we were able to get everything to a level where we felt like everything is materially correct. All right, next slide. So this usually is the most important slide for most of our governments, the total fund balance decreased $767,000. You have restricted fund balance of about 216, so that when we flip to the next slide, we're left with the unassigned category. Your unassigned fund balance is about $400,000, which is now about 9% of your 2023 actual expenditures. And remember, the GFOA, which stands for the Government Finance Officers Association, they're kind of like the Bible of governments. They recommend a minimum of two months. So you can see, and I know you're aware, that the fund balance has gotten a little low, and that's something I know Tim and the staff are really focused on, trying to make sure that if we have a budget that you've approved, we're adhering to that budget unless you amend it. And so kind of be aware of that. So that is one of the comments that you'll see that we have as one of our recommendations. We really want you to grow your fund balance. We want you to get up into a safer range, so that you have some cushion, because you don't ever know when something, the economy could tank, something happens, and if you don't have enough money on the side, it's like that rainy day, you could be put in a situation where you're a little tighter than you want to be, and nobody likes those type of situations, because you've got to figure out alternative solutions there. All right, next slide. So why do you want to have a strong fund balance? Remember, some of your revenues are very cyclical. Your property taxes, remember those real property taxes, they get levied usually in October. People start paying them in December if they want the tax deduction for that year, the real property tax, and then January, February. And you don't really collect a lot of real property taxes after that, so you've got to kind of build up a kitty to kind of carry you to the rest of the year. Business license, Francis, some of those come at certain times of the year. Remember, you want a strong fund balance, because if there are emergencies, what if you have a truck, fire truck, and it goes down? It's $50,000 for the repair. You want to have money on the side to be able to respond. It gives you flexibility. And also, if you are going out into the market to issue debt, if they see you have a strong fund balance, a good track record, they're going to give you lower interest rates than somebody's up and down and all around. So they, they look at your past as a gauge for the risk and the interest rates that they're going to give you. And again, last point there, it's extremely important in uncertain economic times. All right, next slide. Well, let's look at your revenues. Your total revenues in the general fund were about $4 million, and we kind of list the various areas where that those revenues are coming from, property taxes. And honestly, your property taxes are extremely low for most governments. Most governments, probably 50% of their general fund revenues are coming from their property taxes. So just remember, y'all have a different situation because of, you know, the sales tax that y'all have and so forth going on. But if you look down there, you actually had an increase in the revenues of about $600,000 over the prior year, but remember, some of that is that federal, those grant revenues, ARPA, that you recognized in the current, when I say current, it'd be fiscal year 23. As it relates to your budget, you came in significantly over budget. We listed those areas, property taxes, fees, charges, and rentals. The biggest one there, if you look, is that grant revenue. Remember, grant revenue is not a reoccurring revenue source, so it can come in and it could not come back for a while. But usually, remember, too, if you receive grant revenues, you expended them almost always to the same year. So usually, that means you got the money in, but you, you spent it right back out. And when we hit your expenditures, you're going to notice that grant expenditure going right back out. You also had some higher other revenues and a little bit lower fines and forfeitures. Now, let's look at your expenditures. They were about $5 million. We kind of list the biggest areas there. Of course, public safety, for most of our governments, is anywhere between 40 and 60%. And so you can see that that is also a very significant piece of the city's expenditures. And then we list the other departments there. You had a pretty significant increase over the prior year, and you came in over budget by about 1.3. Now, about $400,000 of that was grant expenditures, but then pretty much across... Now about $400,000 of that was grant expenditures, but then pretty much across the board on a lot of your departments, salaries and benefits were the drivers. You had higher costs there. And if you look at the last bullet point there, increase in operating expenditures was mainly salaries and benefits to stay competitive and to increase staff levels. But I I feel like, you know, again, it was at levels that aren't sustainable in in your budget model there. All right, next slide. We're going to briefly look at your hospitality tax fund. You remember, you have about $800,000 in fund balance. Remember, those monies can only be used for tourism-related expenditures. Now, that it is a little broad, but again, it can't just be used for anything. You had revenues coming in of about $600,000 expenditures, I mean, revenues of 600, expenditures of 500. So you added a little bit to fund balance there and you made a little bit of a transfer out to cover some overhead back to the general fund of about $24,000. The grants fund had approximately $19,000 in fund balance. And again, all of that's restricted grant. Usually, remember, if they give you something, it has to be used for a specific purpose. Very rarely is it just unrestricted. You can just do anything you want to with it. Your hands are tied. All right, next slide. We're going to look at your, the net position for the utility fund. You had approximately $16.1 million in net position. It increased to about $400,000. We list the revenue and expenditures and so forth. Some of the bigger items on the very bottom there on the contributions, you had about $900,000 in capital grants. Remember those CDBG grants and the RIA grants? Remember, you get them in, they go right back out, right? And so that's what's taking place there. Remember, you started a few years ago, the capital improvement fee, that was about $300,000. And then you transferred to the general fund about $200,000 to help cover roughly your management's efforts to help kind of manage the utility fund. It's kind of reimbursing a fraction of the cost of their time and efforts on the utility fund. All right, next slide. All right, we're just going to briefly look at the pension. Remember, you participate in the state retirement plans, pretty much like every other local government. You don't really have a lot of choice. That liability unfortunately went up about four point, it is 4.4, but went up about $600,000 over the prior year. And you would say, you know, the thing I want to remind you, it's not like they're going to ask you to write them a check for 4.4 million. They're not going to do that. But look at that third to the last bullet point, it's the rates that they're charging you. You're being charged now 18.561, 56 and 21.24 on every dollar is being sent to the PIBA to try to shore up that plan. So every dollar of payroll, you're paying that additional percentage. And now remember too, your employees also pay 9%. That's a lot of money that they're trying to shore up the state plan. They've been raising that rate 1% per year and fiscal year 24 will be the last 1% raise. And it took them six years because of COVID. They delayed one. So next year you'll find, well, when I say next year, next year to fiscal year 23, fiscal year 24 will be the last 1% rate increase and then it's going to be holding. And the goal is, the state hopes, is that they can start to lower that $24 billion liability down. And if it starts coming down, maybe one day they can start lowering those rates. But right now, they're trying to get it to see if this will help. There's a lot of information about the pension plan. So if you ever get bored, there's about 10 pages in this green book. It tells you about, you know, what the state invests in, how much your employees are paying, how much you're paying, what's your liability, what is the total liability on the state plan? So there's a lot of information in there if you want to read about it. All right, next slide. Want to remind you, you know, on your long-term obligations here, you didn't have any borrowings, but you made principal payments of about $1 million. And so your debt service for fiscal year 24, which is unfortunately about, you know, last year, you know, it's about 1.2, which consists of about $800,000 for your utility fund and about $400,000 related to your governmental funds. Oh, did you? That's okay. All right, capital assets. Your total capital assets were 28.6 million, a slight increase. You had some good additions related to some of those utility projects. Remember also, you bought some vehicles, you had a ladder truck purchased. But remember, we also, once we capitalize something, we begin to depreciate it. So you had 1.9 of additions, but 1.7 of depreciation, so a net of 0.2 of an increase there. All right, we did that one already. There are some new GASB's coming for fiscal year 24. The the GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, they got concerned that what if, it wouldn't maybe affect you all as much as maybe some governments, but what if you bought a lot of little things? But they're under your capitalization threshold. Almost every government sets it at $5,000. Well, what if you bought 1,000 computers at $2,500? That could be pretty significant in total. And a lot of our school districts think about it. They're buying those iPads, Chromebooks every year. And so they came back around and said, you know what? The old golden rule of using a single threshold limit of 5,000 isn't always appropriate. If you buy a lot of something and they're significant, we want you to start capitalizing. And here's the catch on this one, which is kind of bad. They didn't say, okay, starting in fiscal year and forward, do this. We want you to look back at all your purchases over the last few years. And you did a whole bunch of group purchases. You need to go back and add them, starting in fiscal year 24. So next year, it'll be a little bit of pain because we'll have to kind of look backward. But the good thing is, a lot of these items don't have long lives. You know, they're three to five years. So we won't probably look back further in about three years. But again, we're trying to identify, you know, could it be a whole bunch of turnout gear for your fire department? Could it be computers over here? Could it be over here, something, you know, like trash cans or something for some of our sanitation type of entity? So, you know, again, we'll look at that as we work on the fiscal year 24 audit. All right, next slide. We wanted to mention to you now, I know I gave you a couple of other letters, so I want you to be able to always see where this is because I know when we leave this meeting, you know, this PowerPoint's great, but it's just a very high summary. So you see those management letters? See this separate letter that I've give you? I'll show you it right here. In the back of this letter, it's about on page three. I think it is actually page four, there's a detailed analysis of what those comments are. Because I don't want you to leave here and say, you know, what was that about? I can't remember that one. So I want you to be able to see that. But again, we just want to encourage you to try to formalize your policies related to franchise fees. Also, to make sure you always sign and date what you're doing. So when you review or someone prepares it, someone reviews it, you sign and date when you did it. Because there's no proof then of when did someone review it? Or how do I know someone reviewed it? Or how do I know someone prepared it? So that's kind of what some of this, and we really want to encourage you to consider maybe opening up some bank, I think you already have, with the South Carolina Local Government Investment Point. It's just such an easy way to get some higher investment returns with very little work. And I know Tim's already moved down that path a little bit. So that was the first one. The second one was the unassigned fund balance. So you could see that on that page two. And again, we were just concerned that that fund balance was dropping and we want it to grow. We want you to get in a place where you do have some meaningful reserves to help cover yourself if there is an emergency or if times get tough. And the last thing is on that budget one, you know, you way over, the expenditures way exceeded the budget. And generally, you don't want to do that unless the board has approved it or every, there's something that's very known while we're going over. Now, part of that, remember, 400 and some thousand was grants. We know that. But the rest of it, a lot of it was salary and benefits for departmental and operating costs in those departments. And you want to make sure because all of a sudden, if those expenditures go way up and the revenues don't go up, you're going to eat into fund balance. And that's what happened. You ate way into fund balance in fiscal year 23. I know that's something Tim is really big on, wanting to make sure that we got a good budget. We're going to track that budget. And if we're going to go over it, you're going to need to know about it and you approve it. But I'm just saying, I know this is an old year, 23. A lot of people weren't all party to this year, but some reason, you know, we're significantly over those budget in those items. So those are those three recommendations to kind of be aware of. Now, the next area is the compliance, and I want you to see where this is because you see I have three bullet points. So you get this green book and you flip. I'm going to tell you which page to flip to so that we're all there. Turn to page 66. And these are where the findings that we had to list in the financial statement report. And again, you know, one of them is dealing with cutoff, just making sure that everything gets closed out at year end on a timely basis. Remember, everything was really late for everybody. And so, you know, our hope is going forward, this is going to get a lot better. You've got Manley Garvin, you've got Mandy now. I really feel like, you know, this one won't hopefully last any longer, but it was just because the calamity of events that took place, nobody was here, nobody was there to help close out. And that's not a good thing, that bank wrecks aren't being done timely and all those type of things. They got done, they just got done a lot later than is ideal. So again, that's the that first accounting cutoff. Then because of a lot of the cost in the utility fund, you didn't quite meet your rate covenant, you know, for your debt. They want the the bond documents require a 1.20. I think you had around 1.11. And so that's another area you want to make sure you're complying with your bond covenants because that provides them, your bond holders, the cushion that they need to know that, hey, you're going to be able to pay and cover our debt going forward. So that's item there. The last one is on the single audit. You know, there are some reports that need to be filed using the COVID monies. They got a lot of times filed, but really late. Those things need to all be done timely. Those reporting requirements, they tell us if they don't meet certain deadlines, we have to report it. And so that's kind of why we're reporting. Now, we didn't see any money inappropriately spent or anything like that, but again, it's just a reporting requirement that wasn't met timely. All right, now again, I wanted you to see where those were because when you leave here, that that bullet, this little PowerPoint, it's hard to remember all those details. And you can dig back into this if you want to find it. Remember, we did do a single audit. We looked at that COVID program. Outside of that one issue on reporting, we didn't see any improprieties or any problem with that program. Last slide here, just to remind you, you know, unmodified, that's a strange term, but that actually is a good term. That's clean. And the staff really, really are good to work with. I mean, normally, let me tell you what I have on this slide, the very last slide, I have a bullet point said, you have a great fund balance. There's no bullet point for that. I hope one day, the next year, I'll be able to put a bullet, you have a fair fund balance, then maybe a good one, then a very good one. I've had a lot of entities start off on the low end and they've been able to grow it with just sound fiscal management over time to kind of shore themselves up and get them itself in a good position. Because you want to have options. And, you know, you don't have, based on 23, I know we're already up to 25, based on these numbers, your options are a lot more limited. So questions? I know I kind of go quick. Most people like that. Any questions?
Let me ask a quick question. Just clarification, the the accounting methodology in general terms is just like an accrual basis?
It is for the utility fund. Unfortunately, for all the governmental funds, which is the general fund and hospitality, it's more like a modified cash basis. That's just the way the GASB does it.
Okay, so then why, why would there be a need to accrue the business license and tax revenue under that scenario?
Well, a lot of it is, it's just making sure that you're getting your franchise revenue and that, you know, you're tracking to make sure that they're paying the right amount. But the way the modified accrual basis kind of works is it's, they have these non-exchange revenue rules. They're very under GASB 33. They're kind of crazy. But what they say is, when the underlying transaction that generates that franchise tax is happening, you accrue it back to that period. So let's say Duke Power and it relates to, you know, their energy, you know, that's been sold to their customers. Let's just say hypothetically, they they're on your same fiscal year. You want to make sure you're recognizing that revenue related to your fiscal year, the fiscal year that their customers are paying it to. And sometimes there's a huge lag from the time when they collect it from their customers before they have to pay you that franchise fee. But we have to accrue it back to the period that it relates to, to the year that is your fiscal year, if you see what I'm saying.
Yeah, but I'm just, how do you, I mean, so there's no way to really accrue that. You're just.
Well, they do send you early checks usually. And so, you know, that, I can't remember on this one in particular, was it because we were missing one? But the amounts were very, they were varying a lot. And it made us question, are they really paying you the whole amount? And those are the type of thing, I want y'all to be able to be monitoring that, like you have a chart, you see, here it is, here's a four, or if they're paying monthly, okay, why are we missing one? Or why did this one drop 50%? That don't make sense. And then you're you're checking and calling them and finding out why, and they better have a good reason. So that's the type of stuff we're talking, we want to process so that you're kind of monitoring those revenues. Yeah. Other questions?
Are you allowed to call you later?
Oh, yeah, 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 you're welcome.
There's a lot of judges.
I know, I'm sorry.
No.
That's why I don't do the green book. You thought that was bad.
I thank you for making it available.
Right.
Yes.
The only question I have is, could you go over again the difference between unmodified and modified again?
Okay. So unmodified means I'm not modifying our opinion. So I'm saying everything is good. If I modify my opinion, I say everything looks good except for cash or except for revenue, except for something.
So there's just those two there?
There's only two. Yeah, there are somewhere, when we say there's a modified opinion, it could be it's an adverse. We can give you no assurance. There's other types of modified opinions, some are worse than others.
Right.
Yeah. But unmodified is, they used to call that unqualified. And they said, oh, that's hard for people to understand. Let's make it clear. Let's call it unmodified. I don't think it cleared up anything. That's accountants just trying to keep themselves employed.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, we want to thank all the folks, the fine folks from your firm and you.
All the staff and Manley Garvin, there's a lot of people in this.
I do want to point out, as people watch this, and we talk a lot in present tense, and this is 2023, several years ago. And one advantage, if there is an advantage, to being three years behind on audits, is that we can read to the end of the book and we know that we, we just, we just learned in real time that we have a problem with our fund balance. And now magically move forward three years and we've got 24% reserves against our general fund and 16% against our utility fund. Substantial differences.
So I haven't seen all that, so that's great.
And we haven't paid you to see it yet, so I'm sure with that time will come.
Right.
But we do want to, we're gratified in working with our auditors who are looking at a snapshot in time that we, we've taken a lot of the comments that were in here and these have already been rectified. And we look forward to walking through the future with you and showing you where those changes have been made for 24 and for 25.
Yeah, because I just think it's so good that we're able to try to catch up because I was on council at those times and we sometimes did not take it as seriously. It just didn't get done. And I think we have a council now and also administrator and the finance director that's helping us really start to make, move in a sound direction. I thank you for giving this to us for this year, for that year, 2023. I'd like to look at it again as council and then we'll look at where we're at in 2025 and then really be able to see, were we able to really correct those wrongs? And I think we have, but it's something for us to really go by because we didn't have this.
Right, right.
And we were so far behind. Thank you for working with us, having patience with us. And you'll always be a part of us, I hope. Because you've seen us a long time. Yes, sir.
Be quick, please be quick, I got a question too.
You can hold off just a second. Do you think that you're going to be able to get, I know that you guys have other, a lot of other, but we would really like to have both last year's and the year before. We have two audits still outstanding. we have two audits still outstanding. We gonna be able to get to those before we reach our next budget?
You know, we'll have to, Tim and all of us, look, you know, when we met back in May, our, our hope was, is that everything would be found, and if we could get everything done, you know, pretty much by the end of June. You know, the problem is, we're now, our busy season starts August first, and we got like, but once we get through our busy season, we could put a lot of time, you know, starting in December or January next year, and try to knock out those two years and get us all called up. I just don't, I can't promise that we could do it sooner, because I'm literally serious, we got like fifty governments that are coming. And, you know, we've got already commitments where we've already promised, we're on this schedule, so.
So you're not gonna be able to get to us again until January?
Probably that's correct, yes, sir. Yeah, I wish, you know, we would, even when we were here before, I thought it would be very hard to turn everything. I mean, it would have to been all reconciled and figured out so quick, and unfortunately, things just don't usually work that way. I wish they did.
So can you explain to council, what is it that we're paying the state for, you know, to get caught up at one percent a year? I mean, what were they so behind, and why, why are we paying them?
Oh, you're talking about the PIBA?
Yeah.
Okay. So in theoretical terms, and put it in layman's, you know, they were not charging, you know, employees, they weren't asking people to pay as much as they should have for like thirty, forty years. And because, think about yourself, if you come out of college and you don't save the first twenty years, you got a lot of saving to do the last twenty-five years, you're gonna have to two or three times it. Well, that's kind of what our state did, it never was actually getting people to contribute the right amount, employer or employee, and they got way behind the curve. And then they started investing in things they shouldn't have ever invested in.
I mean, were they spending it like the feds do on, with social security?
Well, no, they weren't spending it, but they were putting it in alternative and hedging, a lot of things that just did not, they were paying some of the highest investment fees, but getting some of the lowest returns in the country. And they really made a mad, kinda just cleaned house, probably seven, ten years ago. And that's when they said, we're gonna have to fix this, and we're gonna start raising rates, we gotta shore this puppy up. And that's why these rates have been going up one percent, one percent, one percent, one percent.
So are they running with the same efficiency, our savings that we're putting into the state fund? I mean, we have had some concerns.
Now, the South Carolina local government investment pool is kind of a separate entity on what, how they invest their money, and they've not had any issues on that regard, because they're mandated by the state constitution, they can only invest in these things. Whereas the pension plan, it can put into stocks and all types of alternative investments.
Didn't they have a problem though, at one time? I think that came up in council.
The treasurer's office, like, some monies were misallocated, but it, it, it's weird accounting issue that's probably above my pay grade, to even understand, because there's so many stories, I don't even know what's true. But, you know, in the sense of, you know, their money is a lot more in like T-bill things that are very quantifiable. Whereas the pension plan has a lot more variability of what it can invest in.
So you would recommend to council that for us to even invest more money?
And the South Carolina local government investment, why I like it, 'cause like, right now, a lot of them, it's like around five percent, and you can get it whenever you want. How many places are you gonna go and earn five percent? It's not easy. And they're very quick to just turn it around. I mean, you're a small fish in their pond. I mean, they've got people giving them hundreds of millions of dollars for some of these counties that are investing with the South Carolina local government investment pool, yeah.
But there's no insurance to cover our investment?
No, but again, there's a lot of state law requirements that they get, have to be monitored and complied to, that their auditors on the state level look at. I'm not involved in that, but I'm, yeah. These are good questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen, those are good questions. And I, and I was concerned too, that somewhere along the line, we had to double up our auditing to get caught up.
Right. My hope is, I really feel like we can do that in the first quarter of twenty-six, you know, but we still will need to hit first, you know, twenty-four, get it all closed out, and then there always will be some journal entries that need to roll into the, and then we'll try to crank right into the next year, and hopefully then we can get that where we're called up, yeah.
Suffice it to say, the 2026 audit will not happen on time, most likely.
Most likely not, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow.
Real quick, I know you don't have a glossary in this book, so I'm gonna ask, so what are net revenues?
Yeah, net revenues, like most bond agreements, it's, it's a defined term that generally says your operating revenues minus your operating expenses. That's kinda, and then it says you got to add back for depreciation, things that are non-cash. So it's, it's, it's defined in that bond document, because they wanna see, what is the net cash available to cover your principal and interest payments on your, your bond, your utility debt? And they want that to be at one hundred and twenty percent, because that twenty percent gives them that cushion to the bondholders. And so when it drops below that, then that, that concerns them. But they can't make you do anything, but you are in violation of their bond document, and it's in your best interest too, to want to comply and make sure that, you know, you meet that covenant.
Who's supposed to, who's supposed to be looking at that? I mean, do you, I mean, who, how is it done in other communities, basically?
Well, most time, you're so far over it, it's not, it's not a big deal, hardly nobody looks at it. You're just closer right now, and, you know, you've had a lot of turnover in staff, so a lot of times, the staff is trying to, they don't usually look at that, I would say, monthly, but they usually maybe see annually or once at the end of the year, before the numbers, let's just make sure we're looking good, our running rate. Like, when you do your budget, you wanna make sure that budget, it looks like you're gonna already have the 1.2 built in it. If your budget doesn't have it, you're not probably gonna get it, you know? And so that's the starting point. And then again, if you're then meeting your budget, then you're gonna probably be fine on your rate covenant. So you wanna make sure you design the budget for the utility fund, so it always meets that requirement.
So if, if we wanted to borrow, I mean, basically, our credit doesn't look so good.
Not right now.
Not right now, but this was two years ago.
But where you are, I think you're a lot better.
Which is why we need our audits completed, right? Because that's what they're gonna look at, our last audit.
Right.
They're not gonna allow us to fill out an application.
It'd be hard, no doubt, it'd be a lot harder, yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so that's why we really need it.
No, I get it, I mean, I get it, yeah, I understand.
Hopefully, we won't have to borrow any.
Right, right. Maybe you can time it.
Yeah.
Maybe you could just guarantee.
Oh, yeah, just give a loan personally.
You could do that, because you're like a Bill Gates of Pickens, right?
Free.
Yes. Any other questions?
Not right now.
All right, when you get a call, I know.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
From all of us, probably, because we really wanna, we wanna be good at this, and I thank you for working with us again.
Yeah, thank you. No problem.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we have comments from council. I'd like to start off, did I say something that you told me? Or you gonna say something about downtown? Can I say something? I just talked to Councilman Wilson, and he has concern about downtown, we're gonna have the turtles there, that's sort of his stomping ground all every day, as in being a postman, and he notices, rightfully so, some things that need to be done, as far as making sure that we stay on top of cleaning up weeds and things of that nature. I wanna thank him for coming to me, and we're gonna come to our administrator, but I just wanted to publicly say that when Tim came on, and we got a crew together, that's one of the things he talked to me about, said he wants to make sure that Pickens is beautiful, planting some flowers and things of that nature. It's gonna take some time to do it, but we can make sure that we clean it up. So I was hoping that we can probably get together as a community and do that. If, if the staff would allow us to do that, we can just get one day, and then we can see the turtles while we're doing it, and, and, and then people will get more invested in that, and just start really working as a community. What do y'all think, council?
Sounds good. Absolutely.
David Rivers ignored me, but that's okay.
Well, what, what are we talking about, doing exactly?
Uh, we're trying to get a cleanup day.
A cleanup day.
We've already had one, correct?
Yeah. No one showed up.
No one showed up.
Nobody showed up for it. So hopefully, we can do it again.
So I mean, we, we really...
Can we wait till cooler weather?
What, what do we need to clean up exactly?
Yeah.
Oh, he has pictures. It is a lot of places that are, had mulch, that had weeds and grass growing up in it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a, it's a, if you got OCD like he does, it's, it's big. And I didn't mean that in an ugly way, I mean that in a good way, because...
No, we didn't.
We need, yes, because I just love the way, he loves to have everything nice. And we can work toward doing that, hopefully as a community.
Is that not something that our public service already does, or takes, takes care of?
Well, they have so many jobs, it's, sometimes you can fall behind eight grand with that, yeah. And it's, and it's nothing wrong with us helping out as a community.
Is, is there a way, or is there a possibility of allowing businesses to adopt some of these areas of downtown?
That's a good idea.
And make it their responsibility, maybe they can have a little plaque or something that promotes their business, but make it their area, and they put their name on it, and, you know, if they're not doing a good job, we revoke their thing and give it to somebody else, whatever. I'm just wondering if that might be a way to encourage some additional, especially our downtown folks who are, they, they depend on downtown looking good, right?
It gives them an opportunity to show their pride in their section of town, you know, it's sponsored by so-and-so, and them taking care of them, trying to, right out there, their neighbor. Pride area, and it for...
You know, sometimes we don't realize that it's so much to do in this little town, because there's so many things that need to be done for Public Works to do. But Tim, I want you to share with them exactly what you shared with me when you first came on, about what you would like to see in Pickens before, you remember?
Oh, yeah, just the seasonal, I mean, I really wanna see being able to get out there and, and getting both the city staff, but also the city involved, and the residents in, in trying to plan for, for each season, to go and come out and have some, some plantings that really bloom, and really make it a destination to show the beauty of what we have, from an architectural and a natural standpoint as you go around the, the community.
Also, the amphitheater, the zay, remember that?
Oh, yeah, the, the, well, it was my thought that if we had the zay festival, and we did have some people who I've met over the last two zay festivals, who were saying, where are the special azais? Because we have one cultivar that is sold in pots, and, and the thought was that we could go to the amphitheater and make it a horticultural experience, because there are a thousand varieties of azais that are very distinct and different, and it would not be inexpensive for us to pick a hundred that do well in our kind of area, and plant examples for, for people to peruse during the festival. But if that's gonna be our thing, then let's lean into azais. Just some thoughts along those lines.
Same way the museum does, they've got, they've got different areas, and different flowers, and marked, different types.
I just want the council to know that it's being thought of, it's just, now we can start really thinking about doing that, because I've been to certain little towns, and you could see beautiful plantings all over the place, it was just a beautiful place to, to see. And I just, hopefully, we can help direct that as, as the leaders of this community.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, that our, our new budget, we are, will have a, a position, thanks to the priorities of this council, for codes compliance related to property management of private property and nuisance properties, so that we will be stepping up our enforcement. You know, this, various times of year are difficult, fall leaf season, and all the rain that we've had, and the heat, everything is growing like insane, but we need to be able to plan for that, and it's something where our whole community has to hold hands and do it together. Because the city's only responsible up to a certain point on the sidewalk, and then it's your neighbor who's responsible for the other side. So we all need to work together on that.
That's good. Do you have any other comments? Yes, sir.
I have a couple things. How was the cleanup for the rec center after our event the other night? I, was that your first night to clean up the amphitheater after the event?
Oh, oh, yes, yeah, that's, sorry, I was cleaning the rec center, so.
Was it overwhelming for you guys, or?
I mean, it wasn't terrible, it was a lot better than I expected, as far as what was left on the ground, and what was left behind by, it was a few water bottles here and there, and a good bit. We ended up wrapping up by eleven-thirty that night.
Oh, good, awesome. No, no issues that you need the chair of the council, or that we?
Not with the event, I think it went well, and on, from our end anyway, we had to coordinate the, the bouncy houses and all those different things, but as far as from the infrastructural side and the cleanup passport, I think it went very well.
Okay. Do we have applications submitted yet, Tim, for the new positions?
Yes.
So we do have some already. When is that closed?
They're not closed until I fill in.
Find the right person.
Period.
Excuse me, there's no submission period?
No, we're just accepting applications.
Okay, good.
So it's not too late?
I'm retired. So, I know, I asked you this in a, in a, any other discussions that have been had? I mean, I, I try to go to all the events, and I was at the, it would really be nice that we had those bathroom facility down there, you know what I mean? That we talked about, I guess, that maybe we could discuss with a county about trading some whatever, is that, has that even been discussion with?
There have been discussions, but the chairman was just here and they're working on doing that over the next two years, so.
Two years?
That property wouldn't be, they're not gonna let us go to the bathroom there now.
Right. So we can't get that property over two years?
At least.
Or never, maybe never.
Maybe never?
Potentially true.
Yes.
So we may, we may need to go put it back on the table?
To think about, another alternative, yeah.
Right.
That probably would be a good thing. At least start discussing and be prepared for it.
I think we should. That, that would have been a really good idea. I looked at it the other night when I was there, and I thought, wow, that'd be great to have it there, but. One other question for rec center, who's responsible during the event for, I know Public Works used to just go around, they park a garbage truck, and they go around now and then and empty the trash to make sure it wasn't overflowing?
Parks and Recreation takes care of that now, we were out there being another staff for the event, little before, and all the way up to like, say, eleven-thirty.
Okay.
Making sure bathrooms were restored, cordages were restored, trash cans were emptied out, or at least not overflowing.
Okay.
And that there was enough around the property for everybody.
So you guys were there? Yeah, I was looking for Parks and Recreation, and I forgot that you were, you know, and I didn't think to look for you.
I walked behind the group a couple times down there on the corner, I try to not interfere with y'all, even.
No, I appreciate it. No, thank you for your hard work, man. Thank you for your dedication.
You, Mr. Mayor, I think when we're talking about this, I always thought it would be nice, since we, we don't have our fountain at Legacy Square, that maybe we could, maybe one day we could have a fountain there at, at the amphitheater, maybe near the...
That's my plan.
Is that your plan?
Yes, sir. I would love it. I would like to make it a combination, um, waiting pool for kids to...
Yep. Well, I was just thinking that we could have, yeah, they could do a combination fountain and bathrooms, kind of the same area right there.
Exactly.
Water going all the same way.
But that's, that's one of my dreams, to have something there, if you're facing the amphitheater going in, on that right side that we own, to just make that a fountain and a pool.
And a kind of fun area.
Yeah, so the kids can just get their feet wet in.
Right.
And some, I think that would bring traffic downtown also, to just do that, and be a part of it, just like the pineapple in Charleston.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people just go there just to get wet, on the hot heat of the day. So I think we could have something like that, that would be rid of it.
Could, one, one other, Mr. Mayor, one other idea that maybe council can discuss at our next meeting, I know we had discussed before, maybe a surcharge or a donation or something at each of... at each event, where we could maybe publicize that we are interested as a council in, in building bathrooms out there, and I think people would, would be, you know, we could pass the bucket as people are coming through there, and even a dollar a family, I, I, whatever, council thinks is a good idea, a couple dollars, whatever, but we could, we could, you know, we could begin to put together some funds for our bathroom.
Yeah, I think if you have a goal in mind to reach, and just have a donation opportunity, that'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be great, yes. So maybe we could talk about that at our next work session? You know what I mean?
Perfect, we put it on the agenda.
Yeah, that would be great.
When is our next meeting?
Pardon me?
Twenty-third?
Twenty, yeah.
Our next meeting, right?
Our work session, when is our work session?
Next, right?
Well, we just don't have the reality in our office.
That's right.
Yes, we don't have any other ones this year, this month.
Yeah, we're done for this month?
Yes, and then we'll start back second Monday of August.
There's been a lot of change and then switching lately, so I'm just trying to keep up.
Yeah, we're going to try to...
We're going back on track.
We're going to try to be more consistent down here, on track.
And speaking of that, as far as that municipality, when all the municipalities get together, when, when does that come back up? You been?
Oh, we have the dinners?
Yeah.
County? August.
August, Donal probably usually likes...
Did you say we're doing it in August also?
Eighties Pickens.
Yes.
It's Pickens, we're hosting it?
I'm just doing, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So we need to be there. Like, a good idea.
That'd be perfect.
Yeah, absolutely. So we're having one meeting in August then?
No, we have two, we just have...